Good morning, Chairman, we are now live.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome to this Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee meeting. My name is councillor Alex Hall, Vice Chairman of this committee. In our absence of the chairman councillor Mike Brooks, I will be your chairman for this meeting only. Can I remind you that the audio visual feed of this formal public meeting is being broadcasted live via the county council's website? And with this in mind, I would like to welcome members of the public watching this live. I would like to begin with a health and safety announcement. There is no fire drill planned this morning. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors and leave the building through the reception into the front car park. We then need to wait in the car park until further instructions are issued. Can I remind everyone to ensure their mobiles, laptops and iPads are on silent for the duration of this meeting? May I remind you that the hearing loop is now activated. Request to speak will be collated by the scrutiny officer Kiara. When invited to speak, you should press the button on your microphone unit to make it live, then press again when you have finished your contribution. We will now move on to the formal agenda. Apologies for absence. Councillor Mike Brooks has been replaced by councillor Paul Rossley-Morris. Have we got any other apologies?
No other apologies, Chairman, thank you.
Do any members wish to declare any interest? Seeing none. Moving on to the minutes of the meeting held on the 12th of December 2022. This item is to approve and sign the minutes of the last meeting as a correct record. Please turn to pages five to 10 of the agenda pack. Do I have a proposal and seconda? Councillor Wright, councillor Ashton, thank you for that. We will now vote. You are voting on whether you agree with the minutes are a correct record. All those in favour? Any abstentions? One abstention. I don't think there's any against. No. So thank you. Those minutes are agreed as a correct and accurate record. Moving on to item four, announcements by the chairman, executive councillors and lead officers. We have a heavy agenda today with one pre-decision scrutiny report to take pertinent to revenue and capital budget proposals for the year. Therefore, may I ask officers presenting reports to summarise key points and may I remind all members the importance of succinct questions and concise contributions? Do we have the announcements by councillor Richard Davis? No. Do we have any announcements by officers? Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Chairman, morning and morning the whole committee. Unfortunately, I've got a very unpleasant announcement to give this morning. A very well-respected and dedicated highway officer sadly passed away yesterday. For the respect of the family, we're not going to name this person at this time, but please be aware for the highways service, this is a massive blow for us.
Thank you for that, Sam. Do we have any questions from the committee about... okay, councillor Wright?
Thank you, Chairman. I think we just acknowledge the sad news you just had there. It's a question because I didn't know where to do this because it's not exactly a work programme thing, but hopefully people will understand why I'm asking this. It's in relation to our good friend Michael, who seems to be well-known through the county of Lincolnshire. Now, Michael is a person who likes to advertise for free on our highways. So great big cards stuck on lamp posts, but my real point is he has trailers that he decides to park on the verges and on our roundabouts. So, for instance, we've spent an absolute fortune on all that good work at holding a roundabout, and now you've got a six foot wide by six foot tall, or should I say two metres by two metres trailer that is permanently attached by a chain on an important site line coming out of Sleaford. So, at the moment, you have to rely on the fact that everybody is abiding by the lights on the roundabout because it's a leap of faith when you drive out onto the roundabout. So, I did wonder where this would fit in with. I understand there's not a lot we can do about it, that as soon as we pull them away, they've got the right to put them back. So I did wonder where we'd take this and whether it needs to go to the Secretary of State with regards to a request to change the rules.
Yes, please, Kiara, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Wright will take the question, pass it back to the executive portfolio holder, and in consultation with the Assistant Director, we will take further action and we will keep you in the loop with that. Is that okay? Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Seeing none. Moving on to item five, the Revenue and Capital Budget Proposals 2023-24. This pre-decision scrutiny report is on pages 11 to 20 of the agenda pack and invites the committee to consider the service budget proposals for 2023 to 24. Budget comments, reports and comments will be considered by the executive on the 7th of February 2023. Our actions, the committee is invited to consider and comment on the report and agree to pass our comments to the executive ahead of their consideration of budget proposals in February. Keith Noyland, the Strategic Finance Lead for Place and Fire and Rescue, will be presenting the report. Over to you, Keith.
Thank you, good morning. On pages 11 to 14 of the pack, I've provided the economic background and some detail of the provisional local government settlement, which provides a context to the council's overall financial position. Given the uncertainty in the economy and future funding levels, we're again presenting budget proposals for a single year. The proposed revenue budgets for highways and transport are presented at table five at the top of page 15. The table shows the movements in terms of cost pressures and savings from the current year's budgets. It currently excludes pay inflation, which has been budgeted at 4%, but is currently being held centrally pending any pay award, at which point it'll be distributed to service budgets. As you see from that table, there are a number of changes proposed for the budgets in these areas. Transport services, which includes the budget for transporting eligible pupils to and from schools, has an estimated cost pressure of 4.198 million, and that's caused by inflation and market conditions. That's partially offset by savings from the ongoing transformation programme that's changing the way we procure educational transport and improving contract management and routing. That activity is expected to save a little over 2 million in 2023-24. There are still a number of factors impacting the cost of transport. It is in itself a volatile demand-led budget, which makes it difficult to forecast. So there is still a remaining risk that the budget will need to increase further. In highways, we have two main changes, again caused by inflation. Firstly, in the maintenance contract, where we expect the cost of plant, labour and materials to be five and a half million pounds higher than the previous budget. And secondly, the increased energy costs for signals and street lighting, which much like domestic energy, has doubled in the last year, so causing a cost pressure of some 3.8 million. Turning to capital budgets, table B on page 17 sets out the proposed capital programme. In the main, the previously approved capital programme has been continued forward and no new projects have been added. There are, however, a couple of changes proposed in the budgets for existing projects. The issues in the construction of the Grantham Southern Relief Road Bridge are expected to result in delay and increased cost. It's therefore proposed to increase the budget allocation by 24.5 million. For the North Hycam Relief Road, although construction hasn't yet started, the current levels of inflation are expected to impact the budget, and it's therefore considered prudent to increase the funding allocation in the programme by 35.9 million. The DFT funding for highways maintenance cost is set to continue at the reduced level implemented in 2122 until at least 202425. So that activity continues to be supplemented by the 12.3 million pounds per annum, which was approved by the council in the 2022-23 revenue budget. The capital programme is also augmented by funding from the Development Fund. The Drainage Investigation and Repair Scheme continues into 202324 with a forecast spend for the year of 1.387 million. Just touching on timescales for the rest of the budget process, consultation meeting with local business representatives, trade unions and other partners is scheduled to take place on Friday 27. The proposals are now live on Let's Talk Lincolnshire with the opportunity for the public to comment, and the executive will make its final budget proposals on the 7th of February, which will then be considered by full council on the 17th of February. Hopefully that summarises the main points. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Keith. Do we have any questions from the committee? Councillor Dyer?
Thank you, Chairman, and good morning. Just a few, if I may. On the North Hycam Relief Road, as it goes through my patch, obviously I take an interest in it. You mentioned there within your statement that you're increasing the funding allocation. So I suppose by that, just for you to confirm to committee that despite the funding pressures, LCC are still committed to delivering a dual carriageway bypass, and we're not going to cut any corners in any way. And further to that, I think a criticism that you'll often see in the media of LCC when we're delivering these schemes is that, you know, the price tag is always going to increase because it takes us, you know, 600,000 years to start the actual project. So can you assure committee that in respect to the North Hycam Relief Road, we're going at full throttle to deliver this as soon as possible and that we're trying as much as possible to avoid any delays in the construction of that project? And further on within the report, within para 1.2.7, I won't read the full paragraph, but it's going on, it's discussing rephasing works into later years to better reflect the spending pattern. Could you provide, if you can, more detail to committee on what are some budgets and can you provide examples of what schemes are going to be postponed slightly? And finally, on transport services, has any assessment been made yet on the impact of the very, very, very slight fall in the price of diesel and how that impacts the budget? Or has that already been taken into consideration? Thank you.
If I may, I'll pick up some of those elements. I think they're more project-related than finance, and Keith and I work quite closely together. So I'll try and pick those off in order. As suggested in the paper, this increase will take the budget to approximately 193, so 193 million, which is in line with the key decision that was agreed by the executive sort of summer/autumn last year. I should stress the range of those costs, the range of the project is, I think it's 179 to 212 million, with the 193 being the most likely. But there is still, as you suggest, a lot to go through, a lot of detailed design to still progress, a lot of risks to hopefully design out and a lot of opportunities hopefully to build in. To give absolute assurance and to be very clear with this, this scheme is a dual carriageway scheme, stretching from the completed A15 Lincoln Eastern Bypass through to the Pennals Roundabout at the A46. It is dual carriageway, two lanes in both directions. It is a scheme that we're, hopefully it won't take several thousand years to deliver, that's not our programme, and we are broadly on programme as we speak at this time, with the next key milestone going for planning in September this year, of which before then we will come back for a further key decision with the executive for approval to do so. We're going as fast as we can with the project. There are statutory programmes to meet around planning, legal orders, the actual design process, and clearly what many may have seen on-site the last few months is actually data capture, ground investigations, geophysical surveys, things like that to inform the design. That all takes time. And to give some solace, the procurement or the delivery mechanism that we've picked is a design and build. So we've got Balfour Beatty that was successful with that through Escape on board. For whatever it means, they are incentivised to get this delivered as fast as they can because effectively, to be quite crass, it's more cash in their pocket sooner. So they're the ones delivering the design with us, and they're not going to want to hold anything back that they don't need to because they're commercially driven. So if that gives some solace as well, that it's a team effort going in one direction. Just a comment about what types of schemes have been put back. I mean, Keith may want to pick up on this, but one of the ones is Spalding Wester Relief Road, section one, has been put back to future years to allow the capital that was allocated at to be put towards elements that Keith had gone for, for example, the Grantham Southern Relief Road increase and the North Hycam Relief Road. I think that covers all the questions, but if I've missed anything, please let me know.
Thank you, Sam. I believe that we have Verity Drews, Head of Transformation, online to answer a question. Please come and have that, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So in terms of the price reduction in fuel and diesel specifically around passenger transport, this will directly affect one particular contract model we have, which has indices built in around fuel. So we're looking at that, obviously, as to how that will impact on those costs. But in terms of our other contract prices across the board, we hope that it will impact positively over time, but one of the issues that we do want to make clear is that fuel prices are not the only driver of cost increases in that market. There's a lot of other drivers, no pun intended, including driver shortages, vehicle shortages as well.
Thank you. Councillor Strangall?
Thank you, Chairman. Greatly encouraged by the fact that the Hycam Relief Road's going in, that's going to be a great asset to the southern part of the city anyway. I'd just like you to confirm, and maybe you can't, you can always come back to me later, about whether any plans for the future, once that's gone in, once the Southern Relief Road's gone in, are to actually develop the rest of the A46 running up from the Pennals, the hotel down there, running up towards my division in Birchwood. Because we have a ridiculous situation at the moment. We come off the bypass from Newark, we go into a single carriageway, we get to Wisby and we go into a dual carriageway, we pass Damons and we go into a single carriageway, and then we go back on to a dual carriageway, and it causes a lot of problems around the Birchwood division on the Scallion Top Roundabout. So I'd be encouraged to find out whether there's any future plans or any money available. We've waited a long time for the Northern Bypass, so I'm not exactly, you know, looking at it being done in the next five years, but I'd just like to know whether you've got anything on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. I suppose just initially that the North Hycam Relief Road, yes, it's in the southern part of the city, but just to be clear, it will benefit the whole city and the whole of Lincolnshire. That's what the bid was built around about, freight transport, the economy, the wider growth and just the release of the air. So I think that's just an important point to stress. On the specific points, when we brought to this committee a couple of years ago, maybe, oh, 18 months ago, the Lincoln Transport Strategy, in there was a clear aspiration to improve that network, as you say, about taking from a single to dual carriageway, enlarging the roundabout, similar to Wisby Road Roundabout and Dollington Road Roundabout, and that dual section in between there. Just to be clear on that one, just for information, that bit was dualled as part of the Teal Park developments 10, 12 years ago, not necessarily for higher purpose, for growth purposes. There's definitely an aspiration, but I have to be really, really clear here, this is not the county's highway network. We do not own that network, as you say, between Pennals Roundabout and Scallion Top Road. That is managed by National Highways. So we don't have, it's not our network to bring forward. We continue to canvass, and we have done for years with National Highways, to invest and improve as part of their RIS3 programme. And actually, more recently, I know that they are conducting a, I think they call it a stay zero assessment into Carholm Road Roundabout and whether to improve that. But like everything at the moment, capital funding wise, it is strained, it is difficult even for National Highways, and whether it sits within their RIS3 programme at all is not really in our gift. But, yeah, we do continue to canvass for that.
Councillor Strangall?
Thank you for allowing me to come back, Chairman. Yes, I understand that about National Highways. I mean, Scallion Top Roundabout comes under National Highways, and part of the Western Growth Corridor development was for National Highways to improve that roundabout, because that's where the main accidents happen, coming from the north down from a dual carriageway into a single carriageway. Now, can you confirm for me whether National Highways are still going to do that as part of the Western Growth development? Thank you.
It wouldn't be appropriate for me to confirm or to not confirm for what National Highways plan to do, but the broad intention of improving that roundabout as a result of the Western Growth Corridor, and again, I'm not sure which phase of the delivery of the Western Growth Corridor that improvement comes in, but I know there are discussions, but it wouldn't be for me to confirm it on their behalf.
Thank you. Councillor Clark?
Thank you, Chairman. North Hycam Relief Road can see all the good purposes for it, all the good reasons for it to go ahead. I'm wondering now, when you look at the 35, is it, yeah, 35 extra million on the scheme, it seems to me that, like, when you're in your house, if I'm having a boiler fitted and someone says this is the cost of it, that's the cost of it. But 35 million, do the actual contractors come with an open chequebook?
Simple answer, no. It is defined within the Skate Contract Framework about what they're measured against. The cost estimate, and I'm going to be clear on this, the cost estimate of the 193 as it is now, there will be a repricing at the point of what was called stage two as you go into the construction contract, and that decision will come back to the executive for a key decision prior to signing. As far as the 35 million, it's probably worth being clear, as what was discussed at the key decision prior to entering the contract, that was an increase prior to Balfour Beatty being involved. That was as a result of the multitudes of inflation. And then from memory of the paper, it was broadly about a 23% increase, which was pretty much on line with what's happened through inflation in the construction market. So actually, if all the issues that hadn't happened that's caused the inflation, we would have been on the same, I think, 154, 153 figure. So it really is issues that have occurred that are outside of, you know, Lincolnshire's control or even the country's control. It is what's happening, the inflation.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions? No. Thank you for the questions and comments. This now concludes the discussion of this item. Moving on to the proposal, I move that the committee endorses the report on revenue and capital budget proposals for 2023 to 24, and request that our comments from the discussion as captured are shared with the executive for their consideration ahead of the decisions to be made on the 7th of February. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Strangall? All those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. All those against? Councillor Clark? Any abstentions? No. Thank you, that is agreed. Moving on to item six of the agenda, Civil Parking Enforcement Annual Report 2021-22. This scrutiny report is on pages 21 to 30 of the agenda pack. This paper is an update report for the period from 1st of April 2020 to the 31st of March 2021, and contains financial information on the cost of the service. In terms of the actions, the committee is invited to consider and comment on the detail of the performance contained in the report and to endorse the report for publication on the council's website. Matt Jones, the Parking Services Manager, is here with us to present the report. Over to you, Matt.
Good morning, thank you very much. If I can just clarify at the start that there is an error in the summary box, that's my mistake. The period of cover is the 1st of April 2021 to the 31st of March 2022, as opposed to 2020 to 2021. So apologies for that. The same applies further down in the report, but I'll bring that to your attention as we reach that point. I'll go through the key points within the report itself. It covers a very similar theme to how we've laid the reports out in previous years, focusing on points which we believe are useful for members of the public and members to know and understand how we deliver the service throughout the county. To clarify, enforcement is conducted in a firm but fair manner. So we treat every motorist the same, and each area receives patrols based upon the amount of parking restrictions rested within the town or the city, and we break those down into three categories, A, B and C. Larger areas such as Stamford, Lincoln, Skegness, Boston, for example, receive daily patrols, and smaller areas, Horn Castle, Bourne, Market Raisin, approximately once to twice a week, and then our smaller outerlying villages, which also obviously still contain various restrictions, we patrol more on an ad hoc basis, but we obviously conduct that as efficient as we possibly can. Our enforcement contractor is still APCOA, they're delivering the service for us on behalf of LCC. Some of the services that we offer and that we provide within the parking team are parking suspensions, for example. We issued around 100 last year, that's to aid with events around the county or to assist where there's maintenance works going on the highway. Parking waivers, which is another name for a parking dispensation, it permits a motorist to park on a restriction if there is a specific need, and that's a service which we offer to members of the public. We issued around 1200 last year, or sorry, in the 2021-22 period, that is. One part which I wanted to highlight, which is on page 27 of the documentation pack, is our nuisance parking reporting tool. This was revamped at the end of 2020, and it enabled us to liaise with members of the public in a far more concise and clear manner. Our old method of reporting was for members of the public to highlight a concern via an answer phone service, which it worked, but it wasn't the best method of communication. So we have a new way of reporting reports to us, and there is always a response generated to the member of the public as well. Around two and a half thousand reports were received in this time period, around 1500, a fraction under, we attended to. We still receive various reports which we're unfortunately unable to assist with, predominantly surrounding obstruction, which is a police matter, and a lot of others are actually falling outside of our county area or in district council car parks, which we don't enforce. All of this data is accessible online. So we have a platform which has an array of interactive maps on it, which can be broken down into very specific detail about where we patrolled, what parking tickets have been issued, revenue recovered, appeal statistics, and we can break this down by a date period or even kind of a very specific area if required. In 2122, we issued just over 35,000 tickets, which was, I think it's about our second or third highest on record from when civil parking enforcement was introduced to Lincolnshire in 2012. And that's come about from a more efficient use of the resource we have available, ensuring that we visit areas which are raised to us as a concern, as opposed to visiting areas which are more compliant than others. Again, lots of transparency in the data that we publish, all accessible online, and members of the public are able to ascertain what restrictions, not only in place, but where tickets have been issued and relevant information like that. In terms of our actual finances for the 2122 period, we made a deficit of just under 50,000 pounds. The costs and our income are highlighted on page 29. Our income was a fraction over 1.2 million, whereas our costs were 1.28 million, which is the 50,000 pound deficit that we encountered in this time period. A lot of our... A lot of our income stream, or from, from revenue recovered from penalty charged notices, has remained, and I've highlighted this within the report, has remained very static. The cost of a parking ticket, for example, has remained the same for probably getting close to fifteen years plus now, whereas costs and other items have increased drastically over the years. It is something that we keep an eye on, and we have to monitor where we patrol accordingly in light of this, but in the early days of civil parking enforcement in Lincolnshire, we would quite regularly make a surplus, dependent upon the cost that we had for the, for the year and the income received, but in more recent years, as we can see on the report, we, we've had to draw down from the reserve from the CPE income stream in that respect. In terms of the future of parking services, our contract with APCOA comes to an end towards the end of twenty twenty four, so it's October, November time, so we are in the process of looking or rewriting our contract, or that will be invited for tender later this year, and we've already begun discussions with neighbouring authorities to try and ascertain if there's either efficiencies that we can pick up upon from, from our colleagues across the service area in the country, but also from the knowledge that we've gained over the course of a, of a decade as well. All of that pretty much covers the key points within the report itself, but I'm obviously open to answering any queries or questions that anybody may have.
Thank you. councillor Clark.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you for the report. I'd just like to start off by saying I appreciate the work your officers do outside a certain school down Bootum. What I wanted to ask you today, and you said the key word, obstruction, the highways officers do a sterling job of coming down when there's yellow lines there, you know, saying it's enforceable, et cetera. Where it goes completely off the rails is when it becomes an obstruction, and you ring the police up, and the police say it's nothing to do with us, it's a highways matter. Do you have a lot of this, or is it just on my area they're doing this?
No, you make a very valid, valid comment. Obstruction is an issue throughout the county, throughout the country, and the way that we determine if an obstruction has been created, and what we can actually do to alleviate and assist with that issue, is if there is a parking restriction on the highway, for example, a yellow line, but a vehicle is causing an obstruction, whether it be to a pedestrian on the footpath, or a, another road user, that's where we can enforce. If there is no restriction on the highway full stop, so that vehicle is determined to be causing an obstruction, it does become a police matter. We have heard instances in the past where members of the public have been liaising with the police, and normally that's because they have come to us first of all to raise concerns, and we've redirected them, and it does appear on occasion that sometimes they're directed back to the county council for us to, to try and assist further. We do have communication channels open with the police as well, and we keep them updated on what we can and can't do, and likewise what jurisdiction an officer has. A lot may come down to resource and priority from the police perspective, it's obviously not something I can comment on specifically, but, but yes, it's not unique to, to your area, for example.
Thank you. councillor Dyer.
Thank you, chairman. And before I ask my question, I suppose I should say, I was disappointed to see that on the, the spreadsheet provided on the, on the website, that there wasn't a single parking ticket issued in my division, despite, I know there's some problem areas, so it was disappointing to see that. But just on the, the cost to run the service, and I appreciate it was in the report and you, and you mentioned that, that LCC doesn't set the notice, so the cost to run the service is the cost, and whilst nobody wants to run this service to make, to make money, it's there to, to keep the road safe and keep our, our regulations adhered to. Obviously, we don't want other areas in the council having to, to suffer to, to fund this service, so my, my, just my question is to you, is there anything more we can do as a council to run this service more efficiently? So an example, in the hotspots, because there are some hotspots in Lincoln, are, are we entitled to erect cameras to, to do the job of the traffic officers instead? Because we know they're hotspots, and we can probably work out the location, so is that something that we could do to save cost on man, man hours, so that they can go and police other areas of the, of the county? And just, you, you mentioned, obviously, I welcome there's a new way of reporting, it's online, so that's easier for people to do, but obviously there's a certain proportion of, of society who aren't online, or would prefer not to use, you know, a, a new style way of reporting, so can residents still report by the old school way, still ring up if, if they want to? Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Yes, I mean, first of all, in terms of your area, I'm more than happy to, for you to contact me, and if there are specific concerns, address them to me, and I can liaise with APCOA and determine what we can or can't do. In terms of camera enforcement, we're very, very bound by legislation in terms of what we can do. Now, cameras can be used in certain areas, for example, school keep clear markings, any type of area like that, where there's a pedestrian crossing which has a zigzag marking. Those are recognised as approved devices. We cannot use a camera to monitor a single yellow line, for example, or a double yellow line, or a stretch of limited waiting parking bays. We have used camera enforcement with a mobile CCTV vehicle in the past, outside of schools, this was a few years, few years ago. It seemed to have a visual deterrent on the day, but when the vehicle was not present, it was deemed that non-compliant levels rose, and the more benefit, beneficial approach to enforcement was the presence of officers themselves. In terms of efficiencies, we, we can all, and, and room for improvement, we can always improve in the service that we deliver. We are in regular contact with APCOA, our enforcement contractor, regarding where officers are deployed. I kind of touched upon, if there's a specific area that's been raised to us as a major concern, and it's identified, we will visit that area, and will attempt to make it as compliant as possible. The overall aim isn't to issue parking tickets, which may sound strange, because at the end of the day, you want every vehicle of motorists to comply as much as possible, and the officers would patrol accordingly. So we can improve upon that side of things with APCOA and, and the way we undertake enforcement. We vigorously report and, and dissect the patrols that take place throughout the county, and that's where we try and monitor things. In terms of reporting non-compliant parking to us, yes, a member of the public or anybody can highlight that to us over the telephone if they wish. Appreciate not everybody may have access to the internet or the ability to submit an online reporting form, so we do take verbal requests as well, whether that be direct to our office, or verbally to the enforcement officers on the ground as well, and they will report their findings back to us. Hopefully that answered queries, but if not, let me know.
Thank you. councillor Ashley Myers.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. My, I've got two points, I'll try and be brief, most of which were covered actually by councillor Dyer, and your reply to him. I would like, you, you sort of alluded to different methods of, I have exactly the same as the colleague opposite a school that has a massive amount of interested parties in people parking for ten minutes, and I fully appreciate that no one's going to sprint out from, in this case, Boston Marketplace, into one of the suburbs, because they'd be doing nothing else. But if I can pass the buck, as it were, to your department and say, ring this number, they're terrific, that would be very handy, so if I could actually have from you at some point all the data that I need, I'm just doing a mailing, and great good luck with it. The second point, there's an, an aspect in here about parking waivers. I've been asked by, actually, a neighbour of mine who runs a big carers' sort of network that covers up to Lincoln and all, all around our, our sort of Boston and coastal area. Are waivers available for carers? Simple as, and if so, how do they apply? Because they seem not to know, which I'm slightly surprised at. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for that. Yes, you're right in terms of schools outside of, if we use Boston as an example, where there's an officer deployed in the marketplace or in the town centre. Would it be feasible for an officer to jump from the town centre to, to visit a school? You could argue for and against. We do have two or two or three dedicated officers who patrol the county at school times, specifically in the morning and afternoons, and we, we structure the, the patrols accordingly for that. We are mindful that certain schools have enforceable restrictions, and a lot throughout the county do not, so there, there are occasions where we're unable to assist, unfortunately. In terms of carers and waivers, the, the simple answer is there is not a, a specific permit or waiver available for a carer. We do have a parking policy and procedures manual which details the, the do's and don'ts, and what you can and cannot do as a motorist. The majority of areas have an array of limited waiting parking bays, or car parks, or unrestricted areas which are in proximity to, to, to households. But in the same instance, if, if I can put a hypothetical out there, if a parking ticket was issued to a carer, dependent upon the circumstances, that's where an appeals process comes into, into fruition, and all points are considered. It was a, it's a council policy and decision that there is no specific waiver permit available. There are, again, certain residents, dependent upon which areas of the county you live in, have a resident permit scheme in place, which have visitor permits issued to, to residents, but just to clarify that, there isn't any specific permit available for a carer.
Thank you. councillor Austin.
Thank you very much. I was just going to pick up on the, I know that there are different categories across Lincolnshire, and, and you treat them somewhat differently, and I appreciate the focus is always going to be on the towns, and, and the main towns and cities, but in the division that I represent, I note that in the last year, there has only been five PCNs issued, four in Coningsby and one in Sipsy. Now, I spent the best part of four years getting the road markings and signage upgraded to an enforceable standard in Sipsy. The first meeting I had on that was before being, becoming a county councillor back in twenty sixteen, and this is something that I know I have flagged, and I'm sure this is a very similar story to colleagues across Lincolnshire, that problems with schools, problems with parking, they're not just a town centre concern, they also impact heavily on villages where, you know, you've got a, perhaps a main road with bus stops, where the bus can't make use of the bus stop because people have abandoned their cars, and I, I just wonder whether we could do a little bit more to get our patrols into the vehicle, into their own vehicles, and out into the, into the county in a, in a more proactive way. And I, I hear the argument, obviously, if you're, I, I remember sitting in this committee discussing the camera car going round, and, you know, it was only effective while it was there, but I feel if there is a pattern of enforcement, with a degree of regularity that people are aware of it, then the problem begins to be solved, and I, I, I would like, certainly, for selfish reasons, I would like to see more in, more presence in places like Sipsy and in Coningsby, recognising the skills and the challenges presented by them, but I'm sure I would echo, I, I would speak for, for other colleagues, but I would imagine that there are colleagues across Lincolnshire that have, you know, a very similar situation in the areas that they represent, so could I just say, please, you know, as, as operatives, you know, if, if they're fancying a break from patrolling around Boston for, you know, perhaps a sixth time that day, you go out to Sipsy at about school time, and you, you, you might make a bit of progress.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for your comments. I agree, I understand fully. I know the area in Sipsy that which you're referring to. It is an area that receives patrols, the tickets may not be specifically high, but that's, I suppose, in a way neither here nor there, the, the main point is the actual ability to have a presence in the area. Like I said, we do have dedicated officers that go around the county, looking at not just the town centres, or the middle of areas where there's a, like a, a dense population of traffic restrictions, but the outer lying areas as well. We, I have to be mindful of, as time goes on, more enforceable markings are laid on the carriageway. The school issues, which have been a, well, have been a concern for a number of years, are effectively increased as time goes on with more enforceable restrictions, but, but yes, it's something that we're aware of, and I can feed back to APCOA as well, and we'll try our best and monitor accordingly.
Thank you. councillor Austin.
Thank you, and just one, one more picking up on, on those comments, and what you said earlier in respect of school marking being something that is enforceable by fixed cameras. Appreciating these are going to be quite expensive, and as a county councillor, we won't necessarily have the funding to put one where every community would like to see one. I, there are parish councils out there, and some in my own division, that would quite happily put their hand in their pocket and help pay for one of those, if that was a facility, you know, if that was something that we as a county councillor could look at, to encourage a bit more coverage than we would otherwise be able to pay for ourselves. And I know it's always a challenge, you know, communities are often coming for us, you know, to us, wanting us to do things for them and at our expense, but I know, you know, it's not for everywhere, it's not for every parish, but there are parishes out there that would happily help us to help them, if that was something we could look at, please.
Thank you. Yes, I understand the comments. We've, we've not had anything specifically or direct in the past since we became operational in twenty twelve, but perhaps it's something that could be considered, you know, as time goes on. I can, I can feed that back to my management team, and we can investigate accordingly.
Thank you. councillor Austin.
Thank you. Thank you, chairman. Rather than the question, I think first of all a comment, within my immediate area on the edge of town, of, of, and the edge of Boston, sorry, I should say which town, one of the schools was in fact one that precipitated having the little car with the camera on top, that was at Thomas's School in, in Boston. One of the reasons for that being quite a big school, quite a popular school, but also on the back way or one of the rat runs to the industrial estate, so. And of course, that, when, as you said, whenever there was the little car with its camera on top, then of course, no problem at all, yep. I do think, I said to the, to councillor Davis when he visited me just a week ago, I said, well, I think it's better there than it used to be, however, to be honest, I avoid that bit of road at school time. I go another way, I go through the industrial estate instead, but, so maybe that camera was, I think it highlighted the problems, didn't it? But I've tried to get the length of the school enforcement zone extended, because there's then a children's centre as well, which they wouldn't take into account, but if anything, there's more parking relating to that, because of course that's younger children. So, you know, I'd like some confirmation that that is actually being considered. Interestingly, if I look what's on page twenty eight of this paper, and you, you did comment... Interestingly, if I look what's on page 28 of this paper, and you did comment on the problems with the years, so I don't know what year this represented, but where it says the total PCNs issued, and then there was Silver Street and then Marketplace Boston. Why, why do everybody get parking tickets in Marketplace Boston other than people being obsessed by wanting to pop into the bank? I don't know why, but they always are. So is there any reason why, you know, those two have got such drastically high figures, Silver Street in Lincoln and Marketplace in Boston? You know, can you throw any light on this, please?
Yes, very valid comments. I mean, Silver Street and Marketplace, both extremely popular in the sense of the amount of various parking restrictions there are available in there, whether it be disabled bays, loading bays, pay and display bays, for example, in Boston Marketplace for Boston Borough Council. There's a heavy presence among traffic at night time as well. Our evening patrols, which we, again, structure throughout the county, we receive quite a lot of reports specifically for these two areas, and it's not uncommon, for example, for a later evening patrol up to, we're talking kind of 10pm on, around that sort of time, that a large number of tickets are issued. Again, there is a theme where a motorist may feel they could park somewhere on the off chance of popping into a shop quickly. We have different observation times available, dependent upon what type of parking bay a vehicle is in, and it is a matter of that. I think motorists, not all, a very small percentage at the end of the day, will try and flout the regulations, and we try to kind of eliminate that as much as possible, but the statistics don't lie. These are accurate, these are for the 21, 22 period, and that's the position we're in, very central areas, but it's where our officers are regularly patrolling as well.
Could I just return very briefly? I also wanted to support what somebody over there said, and I forget whether it was Council Ashton Morris or Council Ashton. Yes, we should go get the patrols in the town, but I've had people in the centre of Curtin saying, why can't we have patrols there? Because of course, it is a village, but is Curtin a village, you know? It is as big as probably a place like Spilsby, which is a town, so no, probably no comment, but I'll, for you, but I'll just pass on that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Ashton Morris.
Yes, it's a very tiny point, again, Boston Marketplace, which we feel is very important. Where the metres are, there is no information about how much you should pay. There's a tiny faded postcard sized bit, which I'm constantly, if I'm in that area and I abandon my car, go into the bank, come out, excellent system, because they will say, oh, you've got 10 minutes. But really that needs, it's the tourist area, it's relevant to the stump and shod fries and everywhere else that people come in to look at. It's atrocious, it needs big and bold. I mean, I don't wear glasses, but I mean, I'm peering at it and I can tell people what it is because I know, but could you address that? And actually, I'd be really grateful if you'd let me know when you have.
Yes, that's completely fine. It's, I know what you're, exactly what you're talking about. The payment metres are managed, if we can call it that, by Boston Borough Council.
I do know.
So I can feed that back to officers at Boston Borough. Lincolnshire County Council, we enforced the bays, the restriction, so we don't actually kind of maintain the machine or the metre or the signage on the metre itself, but I can certainly feed that back to colleagues at Boston Borough.
If you'd be good enough to actually do that and follow it up, because two small signs, a foot square with decent sized font on them, would suffice. It would be a negligible amount of money, but I see it time and time again because I bank at NatWest, which is right there where the metre is, and it is a nuisance. Okay, thanks very much indeed.
Thank you for your questions and comments. This now concludes the discussion of this item. I move that the committee endorses the performance report for the highway service, with changes in the report identified, and also that our comments and suggestions made in relation, updates and challenges report are taken on board under consideration by the relevant officers and the executive portfolio holder. Does anyone dissent? No, thank you, that is agreed. Moving on to item seven, the annual update on the approach to transport strategy developments. This report details the purpose and benefits of the council's transport strategy and progress made since the last report in October 2021. The report is on pages 31 to 36 of the agenda pack. In terms of our actions, the committee is invited to make comments on the actions taken to date and the planned developments for future years. Sam Edwards, the Head of Highways Infrastructure and Laboratory Services, is presenting this report over to you, Sam.
Thank you, Chairman. As you stated at the start of the meeting, I know this is quite a packed agenda, so as we do with these papers, I'll treat it as read because there's quite a lot of background information there. But broadly, the paper goes through it, as you suggested, similar to what I've provided on previous annual updates, is what a transport strategy is, why we have it and so forth. I'm also quite conscious, the last three scrutiny meetings, I brought transport strategies here, so I don't intend to go over those elements again. The only item I will pick out, just because I think it's really important, is the transport boards themselves that represent across various different urban areas, is, just to reiterate, I think they're well attended and they do a good purpose in bringing the districts and the council and the county council together with officers and members to have these sort of discussions about them. So moving on to progress, really just a quick summary. Over the last period, we've now completed the Gainesborough Transport Strategy, the Grantham Transport Strategy, Sleaford Transport Strategy and the Skegness and Coast Layer, which have all come to this committee. In addition, we did a review of the Boston Transport Strategy because of the evolution of what we've looked at in the past, we wanted to update the Boston with projects. And just to follow up what we completed, we've also recently completed the Stamford Traffic Model, which leads us nicely on to sort of next financial year and beyond, which is to then take the Stamford Traffic Model and complete a Stamford Transport Strategy, which we've already started engagement with the local members about. And then finally, it feels, doesn't feel that long ago, but it is, that we'll be updating the Lincoln Traffic Model. We have to update these every sort of five to six years or so to make sure that the model is valid, and this is, we're doing this planned so that we've got the new data for when we put the final business case in for the North Iceman Relief Road. So we're thinking sort of three years ahead because we'll need new data for the business case of the DFT. So that's planned to be progressed this financial, or this coming financial year, apologise, 23, 24, hopefully by the end of this calendar year, so it's in line for when the final business case goes forward. All of that, I'll conclude on that point, and it's whether there's any questions.
Council Strangle.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm looking at the local transport plan as I speak, on page 13 basically. Obviously, as a Birchwood and Lincolnshire County Councillor and a City of Lincoln City Councillor, I'm looking at the populations here, appreciate that this is the 2011 census and we're now talking, you know, quite a few years hence. I think it should be taken into consideration because when you talk about transport, it's not just about cars and buses, it's about cyclists and walkers, pedestrians, et cetera. My estimation now, given the fact that the university is somewhere between 12,000 and 14,000 students, we're well over 100,000 now in Lincoln, and the pressures that that puts on highways, obviously, for all aspects, I'm talking about cycleways, I'm talking about pedestrian usage, et cetera. Are you taking that into consideration when we talk about a strategy for Lincoln? And I am being parochial here about Lincoln, obviously, I've served Lincoln since 1991 on the city council, so I can see that it's just extrapolating probably is the wrong word, but it's just going on and on and on, and we've got a very limited boundary here within the city of Lincoln, bounded by the bypass, et cetera. So are you taking that into consideration when we look at these figures and you think, oh, it's only 93,541 in Lincoln? Well, I don't believe that for a moment. You could add at least another 10,000 to that, if not more. And the fact that there are students here, although most of them, if not all of them, won't have cars, there's a lot of pedestrian and cycle usage there. So I just wondered whether you've taken that into consideration, Sam? Thank you.
So quickly, off the really simple answer is yes, again, but I'll go in just to brief a little bit more detail, is the census information is negligible really in actually understanding how traffic movements. You don't have to live in the city to be travelling in it or travelling through it or travelling away from it. What's more important is the traffic modelling, that's what gives the data, that's what people are on roads, and you're quite right, as is defined in the paper and specifically picks out, the transport strategy is much broader than just cars, it's much broader than just walking, cycling, it's about connectivity really, it's about how people, it isn't necessarily through travel, so it is much wider than that. To be clear on why it picks up, so when we produce the transport, well, the traffic model that informs the transport strategy, it looks at the local plan, the build out, sort of the build out of the five year land supply as well as the growth that's planned, it projects background as well as targeted growth, and as I suggest, you know, we don't sit there for 20 years assuming that the world's the same, it does change and therefore we update regularly to ensure that it is representing the true sort of picture. So the census will give data, and it does go into the modelling, but it is not key data because, just because you live here doesn't mean that you travel within here and you cause the movements that we need to manage.
Thank you, Council Austin.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, representing the whole council when I go out and about this year, but I'm going to be parochial at the moment and just consider Boston. You actually led me into what I wanted to talk about. It is a mismatch between the local plan and the transport one. First of all, I'm distinctly miffed really, looking at 1.14 on page 34, that no one ever, and I'm relatively new to this committee, I had to go on the committees that I was told to go on this last two years, not the committee of my choice because this isn't one, but no one ever told me about the transport board, and so I never knew when these things were happening until somebody told me and then it was cancelled, so I couldn't go. But I would have liked to have known that there was a board, you know, years ago, but no one ever told me. Right, and now, this Boston Transport Plan, to me, there is a mismatch with the local, the South East Lynx local plan. And I'm fairly well versed in that because I was one of the LCC representatives on the when we wrote that plan, but it just concerns one small area. For the local plan, we consider the main part of Whiberton, which really is essentially now a suburb of Boston, it's considered part of the built up area of Boston. Yet for the transport plan, it's not. Now surely, it either is or it isn't, and to me, since the local plan says it's now part of the built up area of Boston, then the transport plan should think of it as such. So, you know, any comments, please?
Okay, just on the boards, I mean, they're not, they've never been here, and we have brought it to three previous update papers that have come to the scrutiny committee about these boards being formed. It's unfortunate, I don't chair these meetings, I don't manage them, it is politically managed, so it's not really for me to comment on presence. Just on the local plan, so I think, as we do in the technical language, we have various different terms, and actually, the Local Transport Plan 5 is different to the South East Lincolnshire Local Plan. So within this thread, you've got the LTP5, Local Transport Plan 5, which is, has an umbrella over all the transport strategies and then the projects. The local plan is separate, it is for planning purposes. Now, data from that goes in to inform it, but it's very natural that those areas that you cover will be different because one is picking a planning area across regional, whereas the local, whereas the transport strategy is picking out the urban area itself. So the data is transparent between them, but they are doing different things.
Council Austin.
Just let you think, ponder on this point, you don't have to answer me now, but surely as you come out of Boston on the old A16, as it was in my childhood, and you get to the area, say, around the Pincushion in Whiberton, which I'm sure you know where that is, the Pincushion Inn, you're still essentially in the town, aren't you? I'll just let you think about that. So that should be really considered as part of the built up area of Boston.
Thank you, Council Wite.
Thank you for your spoke, Chairman. Well, I'd just like to say, I did choose to be on this committee, so unlucky gentleman. But now, I mean, this is about meant to be the approach to transport strategies, isn't it? So if we can just actually speak on what the report is rather than individual roads, and I actually think it's a good one, I found it very useful with the transport boards as I spoke at the last scrutiny meeting, I think we mentioned transport boards there, Sam, so we have spoken about them before. And the actual strategies, I found it actually, reading the, if I'd be parochial, you know, the Sleaford one, is cognisant to the local plan, so it does sit there and both plans sort of feed into each other with regards to what the general requirements are, what the strategies are, long term aims, all that kind of thing. So I find the approach that's been taken is really, really useful. It won't pick up every single road and every problem within an area, that's why you go to a board or you've got other ways of feeding that in, but the actual general approach that we're speaking about through this, then I find is very useful and it brings a lot of people together as well to be able to have a voice in it, not just the members as listed, but there's been consultation out there as well, so a lot of people across the county have had the chance to feed into these strategies.
Yes, Council Wite, I totally agree. I know in Louth we have a transport strategy now, and it's a really good way of allowing the district councillors and various other bodies to get involved with the discussion, so I totally agree with that. Council Vernon.
Chairman, thank you, Chairman. And may I just ask a question about the review of the transport strategies? And so on page 35, it states sort of when they're likely to be reviewed, but there doesn't seem to be a particular method to that, some are four, some are five, some are seven, and I just wondered what the criteria was for the review coming up and the update if required. Thank you.
So regardless from the Department of Transport, isn't definitive. Generally, if you're putting in funding bids and things like that, they would like a traffic model definitely and a transport strategy to be within four to six years. So it gives us a bit of scope around whether it's four, five or six years. Generally, we're keeping around that, and a lot of it is actually about, it costs money and there's a funding, so rather than put it all in one year, we want to try and spread it out across multiple years so you're continuously doing various things throughout the years. So they do move around because if there's something we think big is coming up or there's a funding bid and we think, actually, we want to get ahead of that, we can bring that forward and put something back to make sure the data is valued for what we're doing. So there is no sort of, it will definitely be five years and that'll be, there's a bit of flexibility within there, which is really helpful, actually.
I may just come back, I think that's really reassuring to hear that sort of that option is fluid, and as you say, if there are opportunities available, you can adjust the time scale accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you very much. Just a quick question in terms of the Lincoln and Stamford strategies, when are these anticipated to land with us and could we get a heads up so as to slot them in the work programme? Thank you. Thank you.
So the Lincoln one won't be coming here. That's a traffic model update. We don't normally give updates. It's hard to share a model. But the Stamford Transport Strategy, it will probably be around the end of this year, but we'll come back in when we get a more defined scope and programme for that.
Thank you. This, thank you for questions and comments. This now concludes the discussion of this item. I move that the committee receives the report and is satisfied with the progress reported. Does anyone dissent? No, thank you. That is agreed. Moving on to item eight of the agenda, highways, gully cleansing, drainage repair schemes and surface water flooding. This scrutiny report can be found on pages thirty-seven to forty-four of the Agenda Pack. The report sets out the reactive, cyclic and planned aspects of highways drainage maintenance, including low-level flooding response. In terms of our actions, the committee is invited to, one, consider and comment on the detail contained in the update and to recommend any changes or actions to relevant officers and executive portfolio holders. The report will be presented by Nathan Whitfield, Principal Engineer, Drainage TSP. Over to you, Nathan.
Good morning and thank you. The management of highway drainage assets in the county is undertaken by many teams across the highway service. To further enhance the delivery of the maintenance and improvement works on our systems, TSP were tasked with developing the role of the Highway Drainage Asset Lead. That role is to coordinate the teams, to be a highway drainage focal point and deliver consistency across all the teams. To effectively manage our highway drainage systems like any other highway asset, the aims of the Highway Drainage Asset Lead are to develop a asset management system that triggers timely and cost-effective evidence-based actions, to achieve a robust and resilient highway drainage system, to connect the existing highway drainage activities and functions through leadership and innovation, and to develop the, sorry, to develop preventative rather than reactive actions. And then also to seek, excuse me, partnership funding options. The actions, sorry, the outcomes from the aims are expected to be robust and resilient, resilient highway drainage assets, evidence and risk-based asset management decisions, a reduction in the number of complaints or claims and a decrease in the number of reactive actions. Major tasks completed to date include updating our highway infrastructure asset management strategy. Highway drainage now has its own section within the strategy and it highlights the challenges faced. Three of those that I would like to highlight are to obtain the best possible data of our highway drainage assets, to develop cyclic maintenance regimes for all our drainage assets, and to understand how risks associated with climate change impact on our highway drainage systems and to develop a plan for adaption. Linked to all this is an ongoing project, which is called Highway Drainage Legacy Data Capture. This project is reviewing our existing records and the data we hold in our highway drainage systems. So the confidence we have is variable depending on the actual component. Drainage systems now becoming more sophisticated as we have to manage that water. So for example, we have high confidence in our gully data, but not as much confidence in the data we hold on as an example of flow control device. This project has been split into four phases to be done over a number of years. And this is reviewing various records available internally and externally so we can develop some comprehensive records and take those cyclic regimes forward. With respect to drainage cleansing, following the previous drainage subcontract, ACL going to liquidation in twenty-two, our highway term maintenance contract, Balfour Beattie Living Places, has brought in Flowline to continue the routine drainage maintenance. Together with Balfour Beattie and Flowline, we have developed a targeted approach to cleansing. A total of seventy-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-six assets have been cleaned since April twenty-two. Of those, forty-six thousand six hundred and three were parted, part of the targeted cleanse trial, which started in September. Those cleaned prior to that were completed as part of an annual cleanse prior to ACL going into liquidation. This programme currently runs over eighteen months and is due to end on March twenty-twenty-four. So we are currently on schedule, completing this work for routine tankers, one traffic management tanker and a hand crew. The hand crew is focused on cleansing inaccessible assets. Once they've completed those, they deal with some of the issues brought up by the tanker crews on the routine work. In terms of minor drainage improvements, there's an annual budget of six hundred thousand for small-scale works. That typically includes replacing sections of damaged highway perks, installing additional gullies and manholes where ponding occurs, and increasing the size and capacity of drainage systems over small lengths, along with repairing bank and ditch slips. The funding was increased this year from three hundred thousand to six hundred thousand, enabling problematic small schemes that occur during each period of severe weather to be dealt with. The minor work gangs, they continue to run a full programme of drainage investigation works, responding to a variety of local issues not covered by either reactive or planned budgets. In twenty-one, twenty-two, these crews attended and dealt with two hundred and ninety-one sites and have attended a further sixty-four since April. And a hundred and seventy-seven are designed and ready to go for the rest of the year. We'll continue to adjust this programme as more detail is collected from heavy rainfall events where remediation work is identified and agreed. The same approach will continue in twenty-three, twenty-four, and recent flooding events have highlighted new issues which are developing and different type of drainage issues being exposed by varying weather patterns. In terms of flooding response data and section nineteen investigations, in twenty-twenty-two, we received two thousand eight hundred and sixty-five drainage reports and four hundred and seventy-one flooding reports across the whole of the county, comparing with previous years. In twenty-twenty-one, three thousand three hundred and fifty-seven drainage reports, five hundred and thirty-two flooding reports. And for comparison, in twenty-twenty, two thousand five hundred and sixteen drainage reports and four hundred and sixty-four flooding reports for twenty-twenty. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Clark.
Thank you, Chairman. It's quite timely this has come up. Recently, there's been gullies in my area that's been flooded. One of them was clearly that it was blocked with leaves. When I went on Fix My Street or Hit and Miss and I explained to them it was a gully that was full of leaves, the reply was, not our responsibility to sweep the channels. So when I went to the City Council to ask them about, you know, sweeping channels that are blocking the gully, they said, well, block gullies is in our responsibility. So we've got two authorities, one minor, very minor issue that neither of them seem to want to deal with. The second one I reported was a gully that was clearly higher than what the channels was, and I'm still waiting for a reply on that one. So I'm just wondering, you know, if people's bringing up and raising these issues, are they actually being dealt with? Because it doesn't seem from my experience they are.
Thank you, Council Clark. In terms of the gully flooding issue there in relation to leaves, if it's in the actual gully part, that is the responsibility of the Highway Authority and will be out there to either reactively jet or collect that gully arising. What we're trying to do as part of the new targeted cleanse is gather more information, gather more data. Historically, we've been trying to cleanse these assets annually. So in the example that you've given there on a tree-lined sleep, it might be that in the future, once we get some either inquiries or some minor flooding incidents, that it will trigger that to become twice annual. And it may mean then that another asset on the part of the, sort of the highway asset means that it moves to biannual. So it might be that it's de-risked in that sense. But there's, I think there's an action for us to take away there, to have a discussion with the district, all of our districts, just making sure that we are aligning. We do expect them to cleanse the street in terms of street sweepings. That does form as part of their responsibility, but obviously we've got some sort of communication breakdown in this instance, so that's something we can look at. And in terms of the gully that's higher than the channel, that doesn't sound right either. So that's something for us to look at. It'd be good to get the specific asset location and myself and Nathan can look at that.
Thank you. Council Richard Wyeth.
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you for what's in the report. I appreciate all the roads we've got, all the work that's done and what's said in there. My question is about what's not in there, basically. Now, my colleague to my left told me not to moan about my village, so I won't name it, but it begins with Rusk. But long-term, long-term high-street flooding issue took months and months and months to get investigative work done, investigative work carried out. There was some issues that could be resolved, but what was mainly identified was a damaged angling water asset. There you go. So that's all I've got now. So we've had this issue, it's been looked at. So I'm thinking surely somebody must be putting pressure on angling water because if not, it's just going to lead back to it being a highway problem again because eventually it will flood back up and we'll end up with another flooded high-street. So I'm just, although the responsibility obviously lies on angling water to fix its own assets, surely there must be some correlation and surely I must get some feedback as to what's actually happening. Because if that asset's not fixed, we're going to end up back in the same situation again and everybody's going to be banging on highways doors saying, the highway's flooded, what are we going to do about it? So I just wondered what happens in those situations that if it doesn't fall within highways responsibility, what is done then to work with the authority that should be dealing with it to make sure they fix their asset?
I think the best thing we can do with that instance is obviously if we can get the specific information, location, we can have a discussion with angling water. I generally meet with them on a quarterly basis and we look for common issues. And I'd be quite happy to raise that probably sooner that meeting because obviously some distance in the future. So forget some specifics later on, I'm rather happy to take that away for you.
Thank you. Council Vernon.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to refer to the customer transaction section on page forty. I'm so pleased to see that you're changing the wording from works are complete because that is one of the biggest issues that we have, sort of certainly in my area. The automatic reporting, sort of at the bottom of the page that says works complete when it's not, is just so misleading. And I have parishes that are literally checking daily for updates. And when they see that something is down as complete, I then get another phone call saying, no, it's not, they've made a mistake. So that's super. And sort of just extending with that, I'd really like to see that just swept across everything, actually, that a little bit more detail as to the steps that are being taken. And I think it would just ensure that people are aware things are being done and that they're not being ignored, but sort of there is a process and that process may take some time. So I'd welcome more details on those reports going on as to where we're up to, really. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Council Vernon. Something that we, I guess, the systems that we've created, Fix My Street, linking into a system that we raise our task orders confirm, that goes out to our supply chain, Balfour Beattie and their subcontractors. What we've managed to do is automate some of those steps. So when we issue a task order as officers, it goes through a tablet device and then the crews on site finish their work and guess what? It prompts an automated status back to the member of the public. And that makes us a really efficient process in terms of officer time and it means that we can prioritise work elsewhere. But what I guess we're starting to learn now, we need to do a little bit more focused work on that, in that specific path that you've outlined there. What's happened there is probably we've gone out, done an assessment or emergency, let's look at it, let's try and resolve the problem, the jet has gone out, tried to cleanse it, but hasn't fully resolved the problem. And it's just making sure that that journey, that update from the crew goes down a different route and we're constantly looking and evolving that system and it's something that we'll take away. But we do have a project underway at the moment that's looking for lots of improvements on Fix My Street. Some of the updates you'll have noticed changed in the summer months. We're also trying to get our grass-cutting layers on the platform now to try and deviate members of the public to, if they're aware that it's going to be cut next week, for example, they don't have to raise that inquiry. So we're trying to give as much information as we can, but it sounds like we need to do a little bit more there, so I'll take that away as an action.
If I may just come back on that, sort of, at least sort of probably eighty, eighty-five per cent of the time, it's absolutely fine, but it's just those one issues. And then that one issue is perhaps the one that a parish have identified and the six people watching it online going, nothing's happened or it says it's complete. So I just think sort of in certain cases, it probably needs to be looked at a little carefully. That's not very good. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Dyer.
Me again. Thank you, Chairman. I did probably realise halfway through, I don't know whether I should declare an interest or I shouldn't, but I suppose to save me getting a telling off, as the executive support councillor for Colin Davies area, part of that does cover section nineteen and flooding. So I'd probably abstain just to avoid any conflict of interest potentially. I don't know. Or tell me that's not a problem. But just on the comment made by councillor Clark, it's interesting, isn't it? Call me old fashioned, I've got a drain outside of my house and I live on a tree-lined street. And do you know what I do when the leaves come down and block it? I go out there and rather than moan to the council or, you know, demand that the council come out and do it, I go outside my house and clear the leaves myself. I do think we should, you know, the council can't be there to clear drains every time they're blocked with leaves. So the tree-lined street, that happens over a period of months. And I do think there's a bit of self-responsibility involved. It takes all of two seconds when I'm, when I mow the lawn to go out and clear the gully and put the leaves in my garden waste bin. I mean, in Lincoln, as your reference, obviously it's a city council issue, is the authority that are responsible for street cleansing. But it really isn't difficult to keep on top of gullies outside of properties on a personal level. Just one issue though, and I welcome all of the work that's been done. And I know it's highly emotive when there's flooding cases outside of people's properties and they're concerned about their garage maybe getting flooding. It's a highly personal issue and residents understandably get very concerned about that. But one issue that hasn't been mentioned so far is the issues around the county of Natural Springs. So I've got some on Station Road, there's some in Abbey Ward in Lincoln. I know that have been an issue for a long period of time. But what's our approach as a council to Natural Springs? So one on Station Road, LCC came and repaired it and made a very good job of it and it resolved the problem. But as with Natural Springs, it's now come out further down Station Road. So I'm just curious to know what our approach is to Natural Springs because we get a lot of flack. I think there's one in the Abbey Ward area of Lincoln where it's been an issue for a while. Do we actively try and resolve these? Especially at this time of year when it gets icy, they can be very dangerous.
Thank you, Chairman. I think obviously Spring is a cause of high groundwater level tables and obviously they are infrequent in their nature and they can arise anywhere. We do try and tackle them when we're aware of them. And if there's a highway safety issue, we'll obviously try and manage that water on the highway. Being a large county, it's been aware of them. I'd say they do, they do come and they do go. I have some in the village where I live, that sometimes they run, sometimes they don't. And it doesn't always relate on when, after there's been an immediate rainfall. So I think I can say to that is we can take away locations where there are current issues. We can try and look at them and assess them and see if there's any works that we can do. But I hope you can appreciate that obviously groundwater is a natural thing. It's trying, where it comes out, the ground isn't necessarily its actual source. They are a source of constant headache for us. But as I've said, if there is a highway safety issue, we will take appropriate action.
Thank you. And just to confirm, Council Dyer, you would be okay to vote on this item? Council Austin.
Thank you. I'd like to give a sort of good news story. Dare I say, the centre of Curtain has been dry despite the rain. Middlegate Road in front has been dry as far as I can tell and no toilet tissue or anything coming out of manhole covers. So something good has been done. And one third thing about Fix My Street, if people, if an individual wants to get a response, personal response, they must put in, you know, they must say who they are and give a password, mustn't they? And I wonder if everyone realises that. Also, every time there's a hole dug in a road, people always assume it's highways. So anyway, thank you for what's been done in areas of my patch where there was serious flooding previously.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from committee? No. So thank you for questions and comments. This now concludes the discussion of this item. I move that the committee receives the report and that our comments from today's discussion are recorded as feedback and taken under consideration. Does anyone dissent? No, thank you. That is agreed. Moving on to item nine of the agenda, winter service interim report. Members will remember that this report was requested in previous meetings as a way of assessing where we stand with winter pressures on the service and how the implementation of the winter service plan is progressing. The report can be found on pages forty-five to fifty of the Agenda Pack. In terms of our actions, we are to consider and comment on the detail contained in the interim report and recommend any changes or actions to relevant officers and executive portfolio holders. The report will be presented by Jonathan The report will be presented by Jonathan Evans, heads of highways client and contract management, and Darrell Redford, network resilience manager. Over to you, Jonathan.
Thank you, chairman, and good morning, everyone. As you outlined there, Darrell Redford's going to be on hand to deal with some of the questions at the end, but I'll just run through some of the main points of the report. So I'll start with the winter service plan, a little bit of background information. We brought this as a councillor, exec councillor decision in July twenty twenty-two where we discussed it at this transportation scrutiny committee. Lincolnshire County Council carries out precautionary salting and snow clearance treatments on the carriageway and footways in accordance with the winter service plan across the county. The operation prioritises somewhere in the region of three thousand kilometres of the Lincolnshire Road network and the precautionary salting network includes the strategic A, B and links the county's main villages, links between NHS hospitals and treated links to within at least five hundred metres of all primary and secondary schools wherever possible and links between all railway and bus stations and the treated network. The authority has the capability of calling upon forty-three gritters strategically placed around the county and four spare gritters utilised as backups. The winter service plan outlines that a minimum of twenty-five thousand tonnes of salt should be in stock at the start of the winter season with a minimum of fifteen thousand tonnes available at any time throughout the season. Lincolnshire County Council adopted the use of treated salt, brown salt, in twenty nineteen. This was being continued in twenty twenty-three, moving away from the use of pre-wetted system, the reasons for which were outlined in the winter service plan twenty eighteen, and that was largely due to better value for money ultimately. So the brine making equipment that we used to use for the pre-wetted system is now redundant and the systems are at the end of their life with them all being over twenty years old. So the first system has now been successfully removed from the Sturtodep and depot and that's freeing up valuable space within our depots and that's something that we're going to progress over the next year or two. So in terms of an interim update, this data is correct as of the time of the drafting of the report, which was the fifth of January. And at the start of the season, there were twenty-nine thousand five hundred tonnes of salt available across the county and at the time of writing, we were at twenty-one thousand tonnes remaining. Potentially Darrell Redford might be able to provide a little bit of update on the recent cold snap of where we are in terms of run rate. Throughout the next few weeks, we're doing a mid-season restock at number our depots to bring us back up to a sort of a more secure and risk position. So last winter, the authority carried out somewhere in the region, well, carried out sixty-three precautionary salt in turnouts and utilised approximately fifteen thousand tonnes of salt. There were no snow days where severe weather routes were run. So far this season, we've carried out twenty-seven precautionary salting runs using somewhere in the region of eight thousand three hundred tonnes of salt. Just for context, the average normal winter probably means that we run somewhere in the region of eighty-one to eighty-two runs in a typical winter. This one's sort of on average, it's the sort of a typical winter, but we are seeing it in two cold snap spells, one prior to Christmas where we're going out probably twice a day and as we are currently at the moment where it's sort of intense long period, we're not seeing that sort of once per night sort of running rate, but again, we can potentially talk a little bit more about that in questions. So a detailed breakdown of the winter service statistics to date are attached in appendix A. Just wanted to highlight to the Highways and Transportation Scrutiny Committee, some of the good work we're doing in route optimisation analysis. So this is to explore further efficiencies within the highway service. The last time this was carried out, a detailed review like this was back in two thousand and five with minor modifications have been taken ever since. So the network resilience team have uploaded our precautionary salting network and what we're looking to do here is start to analyse different scenarios. So the issues that we're considering are depot locations around the Lincolnshire, that's potentially adding additional depots or taking ones away just to make sure that we've got the coverage right. Run times, capacity, over the last ten to fifteen years, our vehicles have changed. Some of that equipment such as brine making facilities are no longer need to be carried on our vehicles, that gives us a little bit more storage capacity and it also allows us to review some of the road types that are being salting. So the team are working hard at the moment, they've got the three thousand kilometre network and the forty-three existing routes and what we're trying to do is maximise the amount of salting time on each of those routes individually because the greater time of those salting routes that are spent salting as opposed to driving just means that it's more efficient way of doing it. And our plan is to bring that back to the Highways and Transportation Scrutiny Committee as an update to the winter service plan in the near future and then we'll be able to have a discussion around some of the options available to us, whether that's extending the salting network or choosing to reduce our fleet and do it more efficiently and potentially make a saving. The final update here is just on the fleet. So we've got twelve new gritters that will be introduced into the fleet as of the January twenty twenty-three. They're currently in a depot just being finalised and we're likely to see them in the next couple of weeks out on the network. So these are LCC owned vehicles because there's a saving there for us now to invest in them ourselves rather than leasing on a long term. A further thirteen new gritters will be entering the service and replacing the existing fleet from October twenty twenty-three. So out of the existing fleet, we've got twenty-five gritters, which is the total of those two replacements, are close to the end of their working life, all being nine to ten years old. Having this amount of older gritters on the network just means that we're creating maintenance pressure on the contract. So in the year to date, the scrutiny committee will be aware that we brought the decision to exec councillor decision to award a contract to Transport Connects Limited and that's Lincolnshire's transport maintenance provider and they've now taken over complete maintenance of the existing contract. So some of the issues that we're facing at the moment is an ageing fleet, so we're having a higher maintenance than sort of we'd normally expect. They're likely to be resolved with the new gritters coming in, but it is a sort of with these cold snaps that we're seeing, it's just meaning that we've got a probably slightly higher than we'd like to number of vehicles off the road, but we are continuing to meet our policy and we're able to get to the salting network in time. So it just means that sometimes we're having to double run a vehicle and stagger our time slightly. So in summary, the service is being delivered in full and there have been no major delivery problems to date except the sort of pressure that we've got in some of our fleet. So that concludes the winter service interim report and would like the committee to consider and comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stone.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you, Jonathan, for your report. On the top of page forty-seven, it talks about grit bins. Obviously with what's happened in North America just recently, it could be that we're in for another beast from the east. When you talk about grit bins, certainly we don't have parish councils in the district of Lincoln. Are there any bins in Lincoln and if there are, is there a map of where they are? Because I must admit, maybe it's just I missed them, but I've not seen any, so perhaps I could do with that again. I'm being a bit parochial of course, however, I'd like to know because we don't have parish councils obviously to look after things like that. Thank you.
Hello there, councillors. Good morning, my name's Darrell Redford, I'll answer that question for you councillor. There are significant amount of grit bins in Lincoln and we do have them mapped, so I can let you have that if you need it. So if you let me know which area you need, I can let you have a map of where we know all our assets are in that area.
Through you, chairman, thank you very much indeed, I'm grateful for that. In fact, I'm talking about the whole of Lincoln, not just my patch which is Birchwood. Thank you.
Okay, Jonathan.
Just wanted to add to that comment that Darrell's quite right in saying we've got them all mapped now. In terms of the last sort of section where we just updated on some of the good work we're doing with Fix My Street and the public facing platform, we've managed to digitise those assets, so when members of the public want to raise an issue in relation to grit bin filling, they'll be able to select that on a map based system. So that's another positive step we've made there just to communicate really ultimately and it means that when a member of the public is selecting the right asset, we're able to go to that right asset and make sure we fill it, so that's another progress we've made.
Thank you. Councillor Ashton.
Thank you, just a few questions in relation to the fleet update section on page forty-seven. Could you give us a little bit more detail on what issues you're having with some of those nine or ten year old gritters and more specifically, what sort of mileage have they done? Appreciating that these will, I imagine, all be on regular service schedules and everything else, so they shouldn't actually be breaking down particularly often. So I'd like to know what are the things that are breaking on and what sort of mileage have they done? And further to that, what do we do with our gritters, our vehicles when they're not gritting? Because I know if I leave a machine or a lorry for between, say, March and October and come back to it, it probably isn't going to be going as well as when I left it there. Do they go, do you take them for a run round and just keep the brakes and everything slackened off and in good fettle or do they just sit and wait for the next winter? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll answer the last question first. During the summer, we take them in for overhaul and each gritter undertakes forty hours of overhaul servicing, we strip them quite down. You can obviously understand salt and machinery does not mix. You know, there's a lot of rust issues, a lot of issues with electrics and things like that and this is where a lot of the problems arise and it's that. So they come in for forty hours, they are then delivered back to depot closer to the time of the winter rally and we have a rally just before the first run of the season to give them a run around to make sure that they are, you know, all working. I understand what you're saying about leaving vehicles particularly for batteries and things like that, there's all sorts of issues and we try to keep them running as much as possible. I think one of the reasons for breakdowns this season with nine and ten year old vehicles is obviously the amount of work they've done. They all do about ninety thousand kilometres, hundred thousand kilometres about in their life. Some are a little bit more, some are a little bit less depending on the area that they're in and how many times that they run. We do move them about to try and regulate the amount of mileage that they've done, so if they're on a heavy route in early in their life, they can be moved to a less heavy route, usage route in later on. Again, usual problems is machinery, is electrics and the ingress of salt into the system. Accident damage occurs, we do have mirrors hit with trees and things like that, there's all little things like that that go on, bulbs and the usual thing that goes wrong with your vehicle that you would expect. So as the years progress, we do see an exponential increase in problems and we have to keep ahead of that. So yeah, I hope that answers everything you wanted to know. If I've missed anything, please do please come back to me.
Thank you. Yeah, you're saying a big area of difficulty is salt ingress into the electrical system. That's fine, I mean, I can fully appreciate the damage that would do. If that's your main area of issue, then yeah, I'm fully with you.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that I need to point out to councillors is that the gritters nowadays are quite a complicated system and we auto salt, something we call auto salting. So what happens is that the system is downloaded, the route is downloaded into the gritter and the gritter driver, all he has to do is drive and the machine salts for him in the right location for the right spread width, for the right grammage that we've asked him to and that can cause us a lot of problems sometimes with electrical issues. The other thing is your usual breakdowns and, you know, we're not, we're all prone to flat tyres and everything that you would normally get with vehicles as well, but the salt is a real issue obviously and wash down has to be undertaken. The spinner section at the back of a gritter is quite a delicate piece of equipment if that's hit or it gets wear, we have to replace salt sensors, spinners and things like that. So there's a lot of moving parts on one of these pieces of equipment and it's always a battle to keep ahead of it. I think in the future, that twenty-five, having those twenty-five gritters to be placed at the same time over two years, we'll look to move away from that and kind of stretch that out so that we're only replacing a few and we haven't got that major problem towards the end of their life. Hopefully that highlights the issue.
Thank you. Councillor Austin.
Thank you. Yes, one or two different sort of topics altogether. Grit bins, would you recommend that parish councils should be the people who check on them and report them if it's, you know, an area with a parish council? I've got some that's parish and some that isn't. So that's my first question. And then secondly, it's going to be about depots. You talk about closing a couple of depots, you're not going to get rid of my depot at Chainbridge, are you please? I think that's my two simple question.
Yeah, sure, grit bins. When it comes to refilling, parish councils, great at keeping an eye on things, but obviously with Fix My Street, if a member of the public finds it filled, we're not going to ignore that either. So we do appreciate the involvement of parish councils and keeping an eye on things as well as doing some of that salt spreading for us from those grit bins. So yeah, I'm quite happy for the parish councils to continue assisting us, that's great and it's fantastic. As far as the Chainbridge depot goes, Chainbridge is one of our big depots with a lot of equipment in and it's quite centrally placed for the south of the county and that area, so it's one of our more important depots. So I can't suggest that it isn't going to be closed, but with its location, it's a pretty good location.
Thank you for that and that's very encouraging because I can always choose my route to go past it.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Seeing none. So I thank you for the questions and comments, that now concludes the discussion of this item. I move that the committee receives the interim report and that our comments from today's discussion are recorded as feedback and taken under consideration. Does anyone dissent? No, thank you, that is agreed. Moving on to item ten, the committee work programme. This item is on pages fifty-one to fifty-six of the agenda pack. This item enables the committee to comment on the content of its work programme. The report will be presented by Kiara, our scrutiny officer. Our actions are to review the work programme and to highlight any additional scrutiny activity which could be included for consideration in the work programme. Over to Kiara.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Chairman. Gerica Diarno, scrutiny officer designated for this committee. The work programme is being reviewed at each meeting of this committee to ensure that the contents are still relevant and up to date and will continue adding value to the work of the council and partners. With reference to our next meeting, which is now going to be held on the sixth of March twenty twenty-three, we are expecting two pre-decision items, one being on Grantham Future High Street public real improvement and one on the enhanced scheme and plan for Lincolnshire Bus Services. We will also be receiving regular reports which include the Road Safety Partnership annual update, the highways gully cleansing repair and surface water flooding update and the Lincolnshire Traffic Management Working Group outcomes, which if I may remind you, this involves the outputs from the works of the working group that has been commissioned previously by this committee. Also in addition to that, under further, under items to be programmed list, I will be adding the Stamford Strategy which should be landing with us towards the end of the year possibly. Thank you very much, this concludes my update to you.
Sam.
Thank you, chairman. Just some details that we need to pick up, Kiara, that we picked up before, but the meeting on the sixth of March, the Grantham High Street, so our next meeting, first of all, it won't be an exempt paper. I'm not sure why it's exempt down there, it was never intended to be and it will be myself presenting rather than Theresa James and it will almost certainly not be the next meeting, we'll be back in touch for, to make sure we've got the cost back to inform that prior to the pre-decision, the pre-key decision. And also for the committee paper, the committee on the twenty-fourth of April, the levelling up fund for Greensale and Springfield's roundabout, that will continue as it is, although again, it will be myself rather than Theresa James presenting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ashton.
Thank you, just picking up on item five on page fifty-two on the, for the sixth of March, the Lincolnshire Traffic Management Working Group outcomes. Do we know what's happening with this group? I did express an interest of being part of that if I'm reading between the lines that this is effectively the review of speed limit policy and that side of things. Is that meeting or is it due to meet and who is likely to be invited to be part of it? Because I haven't heard anything since the last meeting in respect of that.
Jonathan.
Yeah, we've seen a lot of activity in that area on the officer side, so that group has been regularly meeting, it's progressing to a sort of a formal policy, but it's probably best to get an update from Karen Cassar who's leading that work activity at the moment and we'll make sure that's in action to get in contact.
I can also provide a very short update, the group has already met once, there has been a membership established, it involves some members who had previously expressed interest. If we can pick this up in regards to your membership outside, because I think that you are due to take part to the actual review. which is why you haven't been involved in this one, but that's something that we can pick up offline. There's a second meeting to take place. It is being organised at the moment. And we will be able to have more information of the outcomes in the next meeting perhaps. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I move that we note the report and approve the existing work programme as detailed in pages fifty-one to fifty-six with the changes that have been identified. Does anyone dissent? If so, please indicate now. No, thank you. That is agreed. That now concludes the business of the meeting. Thank you everyone for your attendance. Thank you.